Hey, Don, we're testing these microphones.
Shannon, will you talk?
Hi, Don. Can you hear me?
We're gonna see if Don can hear that.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Usually has a lot of room.
Don's still testing. Can you hear us? Hello, third floor. Russell Stahl's here.
Oh.
Yes, I am.
It's her day.
Shannon, I'm here.
Hi, Don.
I said I had to throw mine out so I could do what I wanted to do for bailiffs.
And my phone's fully charged.
I have never regretted doing this at all.
You have that.
Oh, okay.
Have been working for a long time, particularly even to help make sure houses and apartments had heating units. Almost fainted. But if you look at state law, it wasn't required. And trying to get, trying to get people, we had people. Um, see, my mother died in ninety six, but right before during the nineties, we had an influx of people. We had a number of people who froze to death in this, this town. And so that could not happen. That was the last thing my mother said to me after we came from a meeting was please stop people from freezing in there. Which means you had to have better housing and they had to have a unit in it. So, um, so you know, when people say the city hasn't done anything, you got, you go back and look. Cause there was a time when we had almost fifteen hundred, um, rental properties. For most of those, seven hundred of them were not up to code. You know, they had places to stay, but you didn't want to put them in there.
And, and in the fifties, we had an ordinance that required a bathroom for every two houses.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. So now we moved after the balancing our housing, our housing act from two, our housing policy study from two thousand and sixteen went into our comprehensive plans. City council unanimously adopted Greenville twenty forty in February twenty twenty one. Next slide. Greenville twenty forty was a two-year process that also had tremendous public input and engagement. The project had forty-two steering committee members from neighborhoods across the city who met repeatedly to agree on what was best, not for one particular resident, business, or neighborhood, but on the big issues facing our community. After two years of incredible public engagement, which went virtual during the pandemic and made it possible for anyone with a phone or computer to participate in the discussion, our city council unanimously passed the com- comprehensive plan. That doesn't happen everywhere. Look at the no votes in other communities. Consensus around the future for Greenville was overwhelming. And we went straight from Greenville twenty forty into the development code project. Before we move on, I will also share that Greenville twenty forty and the process we went through won the top planning project award from the South Carolina chapter of American Planning Association in twenty twenty-three. We are proud of the work that this community and the twenty forty steering committee did. And other communities across the state recognize the tremendous work and achievements that ma- made from that plan. Next slide, please. Greenville twenty forty is the policy document that provided the overarching framework for the new code. The three priorities of affordable housing, open space, and transportation and mobility are embedded throughout the document. While the node and corridor framework was the driving principle behind the zoning map. There have been a few questions during the code process about the comprehensive plan and how it relates to zoning. This came from the attorney that was, has advised the city throughout the project, so I apologize if it sounds a little legal here. But the comprehensive plan is a broad policy document that sets forth an expression of the planning commission, recommendations to the appropriate governing bodies with regard to the wise and efficient use of public funds, future growth, development, and redevelopment of its area of jurisdiction, and consideration of the fiscal impact on property owners. Specifically with regard to zoning, the comprehensive land plan must include a land use element which considers existing and future land use by categories. The purpose of the zoning ordinance is to help implement the comprehensive plan. As the Greenville twenty forty plan explains, comprehensive plan itself, however, is not a law and is not legally binding. Instead, implementation of the plan occurs when the plan's vision for the future is faithfully translated into ordinances, budgets, and decisions made by elected and appointed bodies that wield policy and decision-making powers. In other words, a zoning regulation should be generally consistent with the broad policies and goals set forth in the comprehensive code. However, the comprehensive plan does not bind or restrict the specific zoning regulations and decisions that city council may choose to make after the plan's adoption. All that is to say that the comprehensive plan is a high-level policy document, but the actual regulatory document is the zoning code. Which is why this new code, development code and zoning map were drafted for the city. Next slide, please. With Greenville twenty forty, the community expressed the desire to continue growing and developing, but in a well-planned and intentional way. With the adoption of the new code and maps, development will be concentrated downtown along transportation corridors and within nodes, which are walkable mixed-use centers located throughout the city as recommended by Greenville twenty forty. Directing growth toward these areas will reduce the government pressure in neighborhoods and help preserve the character of existing residential areas. A small number of residents have questioned the pro-growth direction embraced by the community in Greenville twenty forty. They do not want to become Charlotte or Atlanta. As staff members and residents of Greenville ourselves, we can assure you that no one involved with Greenville twenty forty or the development code wants to become Charlotte or Atlanta. We will offer this, an anti-growth agenda where the city says no to development only pushes all of the inevitable growth in our, in our region to the perim- to the perimeter of our suburbs. Though people who live outside the city, they will wa- they will still work in the city. They will use city roads, shop, and visit our parks every day. Greenville twenty forty invites us to make these newcomers member of our community. A no-growth policy in the city is how you get to be Charlotte and Atlanta. Appropriate infill development along nodes and corridors as proposed in Greenville twenty forty places residents closer to where they work, shop, and want to be. This creates new value in our community, redevelops old shopping centers and abandoned parking lots, reduces long commutes and interstate traffic coming into the city, and places people and business where infrastructure already exists. This growth can occur in a way that protects existing neighborhoods, which the new code does and the existing code does not. Next slide, please. Greenville twenty forty includes many terminal concepts that we've become familiar with over the past years. Nodes, neighborhoods, corridors, open space. These helped inform the code and influence the code and new zoning map. Next slide, please. Phase one of the implementation plan for Greenville twenty forty called upon the city to update its land management ordinance. Specific policies and recommendations were provided in Greenville twenty forty that the community and city council asked to be included in the code. The new code is very much a reflection of these policies as we will detail here shortly. Okay, so that pretty much wraps up Greenville twenty forty that led to the creation of the new code. We'll talk more about how they are consistent in a few slides.
Hey Shannon?
Yes?
Can I just pause you for a second, even though you're on a great roll? Um. To me, it's, it's worth slowing down on the fact to note that GBL twenty forty did not mandate that we write a whole new code. It mandated, well, mandate is too strong a word, but clearly a new land manage- or land management ordinance update was needed. We had a choice to scalpel, carve, uh, uh, refine, edit the existing land management ordinance. And that option was dismissed at the recommendation of staff and in full concurrence, because we lived that for a brief period doing text amendments and saw what bandwidth it takes up just to get those little edits done. So it's kind of like if you have a paper you're turning in for a class and it's not a good paper for the assignment, best to start all over and write a new paper. And so that to me was a fundamental recommendation that got us to this new code and very important, not, you know, not to be overlooked. The other thing that is my favorite page in GBL twenty forty, um, the prioritize must-do checklist for twenty-one and twenty-two. And can, this council asked for that to say, great document, now what do we do kind of, you know, what are our marching orders? And every single one of those items of our assignment in the short term will have been done if this code is adopted. And, and, and to me, I can't say enough about this council supporting it, collectively prioritizing it, and staff taking us along the way to get this done. So those are two things that are, you know, just shouldn't be glossed over. It's critical to have an all-new code. The existing code is about how many pages? Roughly.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty. So when I hear that the new code is four hundred and forty and way too much to absorb, with far more pictures, by the way, that, that, that's kind of lost on me, but, but, you know, this was, having this new code is, was essential and a great recommendation from staff.
Appreciate your comment about the number of pages, cause I wondered about, I didn't know how many were old.
Well, and the old one doesn't have pictures like the new one does. So it is not. Yeah, I love the pictures in the new one, but my point is, is that to.
Diagrams, diagrams.
To absorb and understand.
Diagrams for explanation.
Much less uplift to even try to absorb our current code. And that's part of the problem of why we are where we are.
That's right.
The new code gives us clarity, consistency, predictability, which is important not only for residents, property owners, but developers and all stakeholders.
And I'm glad you said that because the old code, it was just patchwork. It, I mean, there's no consistency. If you look around the neighborhood, you just, I mean, you may have a McMansion right here. Three feet over here, you got a little shack. I'm just saying, there's no consistency and the roads and cars, I mean, it just was patchwork. And y'all are very kind, that thing was old.
It was, and someone, you see. This after PC Shannon, then you that, that the existing code from two thousand and seven was essentially at the onset of the iPhone. Somebody pointed that out, we have BlackMares before then. And dinosaurs roamed the earth. So to get, you know, an idea of how dated the code was, it was pre-iPhone. And Android for the Android users.
And if you have to spend all the time, we spent time, um, time patching it up, adding more things to it, if you have to add all that stuff, shuck it and start again. And I think it was bold of this council to say shuck it and start again. You know, we, I'm old, so I, we haven't, we haven't done that very often. It's like, woo, let's take it and do something, oh, some things have to go.
Well, you kind of took my words out of my mouth, but I'm going to stick to my script.
Okay.
But the city's done many minor updates. And short-term solutions, what we've been calling Band-Aid fixes to our existing LMO over the years. These have all been well-intentioned and many, it may have had a beneficial short-term impact when they were passed, but there have been so many since the last major code update in two thousand and seven, to the point where our LMO is inconsistent, contradicts itself, and has many minor intricacies while missing the big picture on many levels.
Very well said.
So here we are, a partial list of the many changes, including proposals that were not adopted but were put forward to attempt to solve issues with our current clo- with our current code. Original single-family residential infill standards, RDB Pendleton corridor rezoning, proposed single-family attached standards, neighborhood revitalization overlay standards, tree protection ordinance, Unity Park Neighborhood Care District Character Code, affordable housing hotel conversions, wireless communication facilities, proposed density changes for RM three, neighborhood protection text amendments, proposed update of infill standards. The new code takes the good parts from many of these efforts and combines them into a uniform, consistent set of standards. Importantly, these pieces work together to advance a consistent set of goals and priorities for our community. Affordable housing, open space, transportation and mo- mobility while protecting neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Okay, the last foundation is the numerous planning studies for different neighborhoods, roadways, sub-districts of downtown, and other areas of the city over the years. Each of these were completed with significant community input, but were oftentimes never codified. And haven't we run into that several times in the last couple of years? Just a few of these master plans. The co-consultants reviewed all of our known master plans and incorporated the applicable elements into the code or map as appropriate and as they align with the overall project goals. We also recognize that some of these require updating, and several of these updates will begin once we get through the code process. We've asked for a couple of those in our next budget, which you will also be hearing later this evening. Okay, next slide, please. That concludes the look at the foundations of the new code. I will add that in addition to influence from these formal efforts, the code incorporates years of experience by, and professional staff, neighborhood representatives, and design professionals that live and work in Greenville, who have provided their insights and lessons learned from countless public hearings, neighborhood meetings, permit reviews, zoning inspections, home remodeling projects, and other experiences working under the existing LMO. We have a good sense of the shortcomings of the current LMO and how the new code will work to address or fix these shortcomings. With the community involvement and public input on the code, we think we are at a good place, and the planning commission also agreed the code was ready to move to city council with a seven-to-zero recommendation vote to move it forward with their recommendation of approval. So saying all that, let's get to the new code. So we will start with the new public review timeline. The draft code and zoning map were initially released on January twenty-fifth. The city hosted numerous public events that week, including open houses, coffee with the code, lunches with our review boards and neighborhood presidents, and a half-day workshop with city council at Unity Park Welcome Center. In February, we launched our world tour of Greenville. Staff presented at many evening neighborhood meetings and conducted numerous daytime meetings throughout February and into March. We received two hundred and fifty comments to the public input email address created for this project. Staff reviewed and evaluated each proposed change for its consistency with Greenville twenty forty, the overall code framework, effects on other properties, accepted planning and urban design principles, and other criteria. Revised drafts of the code and zoning maps with changes incorporated were posted online and publicly noticed March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. All of the changes recommended since then are in reference to the March fifteenth draft of the code. Planning Commission conducted its first meeting and received public comments on March thirtieth. The hearing was recessed until the public hearing continuance of April eleventh. At that meeting, staff received much valuable input from the planning commission members. Last week, planning commission conducted its final meeting and included her public comments. In addition to posting the comprehensive document of all staff-recommended modifications on April twenty-eighth, the city updated the interactive zoning map. We also added new resources to the project website, which include additional resources for anyone wanting to learn more about the code. Staff also continued to answer questions and met with anyone interested in the code during this whole-time period. And I think at this point, we've probably met with over sixteen hundred people and continuing to meet on a daily basis.
Shannon, when did we, um, when did we hire Thomas and Mr.?
July of twenty twenty-one.
And we had a public meeting on that and that was all public knowledge, so anybody paying attention should have known that you were hiring consultants. Well, the sole purpose of redoing that.
Yes, it was an item on your planning, on your city council agenda that you had to approve. It was part of your budget for that year also.
And Le- is Leslie in here?
She's over here.
Um, an offer was made to every neighborhood association for essentially a dedicated meeting to that neighborhood association, um, from planning staff.
Multiple times, and any neighborhood association in the city gets an email from Leslie every Friday that identifies every major happening in the city, whether it's a planning company, something with parks and recreation, anything of that nature, every Friday.
Now, not all neighborhoods took advantage of that offer.
But a lot of them did.
Most did.
I would say the most, I, I mean, we'd have to count, but so, many did. Um, so just the importance of having a neighborhood.
Five were very involved.
That was part of your world tour.
It was part of our world.
At some point, we were doing about three a week, from what I remember.
More than that.
Yeah.
More than that. There were, there were, there were evenings where there were three in one evening and our staff.
Covered it all, but the offer was made to every neighborhood association repeatedly.
Including learning labs as well for anyone who maybe isn't in a neighborhood association but wanted to attend. As you know, public outreach engagement is of utmost importance to the city of Greenville. This slide presents some of the engagement efforts that the city conducted throughout the update process for the new development code. Our outreach included public meetings, online surveys, a dedicated project website, and I will note that those are unique page views, meaning different users that access those pages, social media, drop-in sessions and learning labs to the community to learn about the new code, monthly updates at board and commission meetings, public workshops with city council, including the city council retreat, and of course, our required public notice, including the mail postcards and over one thousand signs posted throughout the community. The city of Greenville went above and beyond the state of South Carolina requirements in any peer communities undergoing a similar code rewriting process. Every day for the past five months, staff has met with property owners, neighborhood associations, advocacy groups, developers, and many others to share information about the code and receive feedback. We counted over fifteen hundred attendees at that meeting, even though the actual number is highly like, is likely higher and we're continuing to meet every day. And I think it's really important to note that this is just some of what we did, but our communications team started doing social media posts on the code in January of twenty twenty-two. The first social media posts about the code were January twenty twenty-two.
Didn't you mean to say every day and every night?
Yes. Yes. They just all run together for me at this point.
Shannon, short of television advertising.
Well, we did do a bill.
We did do that.
Did we do the bill?
I mean television. I'm talking television. You know.
Oh, yeah. The bottom story pushed the bottom.
Which I would not advocate for us to spend taxpayer dollars on television advertising. I can't think of an advertising vehicle that was not used to promote that transparency on this code.
Goodyear Blunt.
Goodyear Blunt, true, I also.
But we did have, um, thanks to GTA, we had, um, posters at our bus shelters. Well, we paid, we paid. Yes, but they allowed us to use their shelters. We had posters at the filter at our bus shelters. Um, we put.
Thanks to Public Works, we got it on every garbage truck.
We had banners on all of our garbage trucks, thanks to Public Works. So we tried to be creative with how to make sure that people were aware that this was happening.
Very transparent, thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so here are the major elements of the new code. The code has been formatted to provide two-page illustrated spreads of each zoning district. Users can review these pages, the table of uses, and zoning map to determine what they can and cannot do with their property. And I say that to say that if you need, want to know what, how this impacts your property, you can know in about five minutes. Because you can go on the interactive zoning map and you can find your new proposed zoning district. Then from there, you just need to go onto the code map and you can know in the two pages for that code, all of the site requirements and the building requirements for that zoning classification. And then you can cross-reference to the table of uses to see what's allowed in that zoning classification for the table of uses. And that will quickly tell you how this code impacts your specific property. All that within a matter of a couple of minutes. So we could go on to the two oh-six South Main Street on the interactive zoning code. It's going to tell us that we are proposed to be M X D. We're going to go look at the M X D and see what that says and what is our requirements. And then we're going to look at the table of uses to see what's permitted at M X D and know what we can and cannot do here at city hall. We'll know within a couple of minutes of how this impacts us. So yes, while the code is lengthy, um, to have a general understanding of its impact um, on your, on your specific property, that's a pretty quick review. Um, now, there's a lot of technical elements within the code as you start to develop, but I think that if you have a concern about your specific property, we can help answer that within a few minutes.
Shannon, I think it's important to point out too that this is a living, breathing document. It's dynamic, it's not static, it's not as if we are saying, this is it in perpetuity for the, forever. It's a, this is, this is what we think is going to work best. And with any reform package that is passed, you probably expect that in a year, you're going to say, hey, you know what? Let's, we could, we probably can make it better doing this, or maybe there's a wrinkle we didn't quite think about until we actually put it in place. So it's important to know that it is living and breathing.
Yes, in fact, staff has been saying that from the very beginning, and we asked and planning commission recommended, um, that we do a six-month review and then another six-month review and then annually thereafter to ensure that we are holding ourselves as a community accountable that the, that we are reviewing the code to see what works and what doesn't work. And that we know that right away, and then we're addressing it, and we're not letting it sit static for years. Where, you know, the idea is that as we update to Greenville twenty forty, you know, we have to do a minor update here in a couple of years. Um, and we're going to have to add a resiliency chapter based on state law. So we're going to have to probably make updates to our code as that. But instead of waiting for the code to have to require an entire redo, like what we're doing now, the idea is that with an annual review, we'll be able to address those things annually to stay in line with our comprehensive plan. Um, and as the city changes and its policies change, that our ordinance can then be codified in such a way that it reflects those policy changes. All right. The new document includes many illustrations with clear dimensional standards. Once the code and map are adopted by city council and all changes are finalized, the table of contents and section references throughout the PDF document will hyperlink to the reference sections of the code, maximizing usability and document navigation. Whereas the current LMO operates on a Euclidean zoning system that emphasizes separation of land uses, the new development code incorporates many form-based code elements. The new code still regulates land uses by zoning district, but now includes standards to regulate the height, mass, orientation, and architectural elements of new development. These form-based standards help control the heights, setbacks, mass, and width of buildings and residential districts while controlling for elements such as floor height, upper-story setbacks, build-to requirements, and additional design features in non-residential districts. These standards provide predictability while still allowing for diversity in materials and architectural design. The number of new zoning districts has approximately doubled in the new code. The new districts are rep- are presented within the code and discussed within our staff reports. Staff believes the new districts will help enable the node and corridor development pattern envisioned in Greenville twenty forty without becoming too unwieldy for the city to administer. And I think that that's really important on the new zoning districts. Currently, I think we have twelve zoning districts and we've gone to twenty-six. And that was intentional. And it was intentional so that we can look at each neighborhood and each area of town specific as to their development patterns and not try to implement a one-size-fits-all solution. And in a lot of cases right now, we feel like that is what the new, what the existing code does. One of the new elements of the key, of the new code is the development bonus system. A developer may obtain additional height or density for a project in certain zoning districts in exchange for providing affordable housing and contributing to the city's open space program. As clarification, an applicant requesting additional height or density must comply with both the affordable housing and the open space requirements to obtain the development bonus. The development bonus is granted if a developer provides fifteen percent of all units in their project to eighty percent of the area median income, or ten percent of all units to sixty percent area median income, consistent with two related Greenville twenty forty goals, more inclusive and affordable development and affordability throughout the city. Importantly, the affordable housing must be provided within the development. A fee-in lieu option is not currently offered, which means affordable housing units will actually be built. The required affordability term is twenty years. Compliance and monitoring will be enforced by the city's community development department. And non-compliance will result in a zoning violation. Non-residential projects such as office or commercial may obtain additional building height if they pay a two dollar and fifty cent affordable housing mitigation fee per square foot of floor area that exceeds the base height. In response to an email concern last week, the affordability bonus is limited to two stories and is not available in the RH single-family zoning districts. Staff worked with legal on some slight refinements to the affordable housing section to make it match more closely with the exact language of state law and to make sure that we are buttoned up on the legal side. In addition to meeting the affordable housing requirements, applicants must also contribute to open space to obtain the development bonus. For both residential and non-residential projects, developers must pay a two dollar and fifty cent open space mitigation fee per square foot of floor area that exceeds the base height. The code also includes a provision that would allow the administrator to accept the dedication of on- or off-site real property as open space in lieu of, or to reduce the mitigation fee. Key to the development bonus system is that both the base and bonus development permissions are entitled by right. This means that the developer can build the additional stories or units permitted by the development bonus without the need for public review, negotiation, or special review, approval from a review board. An extensive public review and procedural delays would add significant costs to a project and may dissuade developers from pursuing the development bonus provisions. As specified within the policy framework of Greenville twenty forty, neighborhoods would receive additional internal protections in exchange for accepting additional height and density along corridors and within. in exchange for accepting additional height and density along corridors and within nodes. Height and density cannot be decoupled from the affordability equation and it is elemental to the incentive structure that developers have access to the additional height and density allowances if the community is to achieve its affordable housing and open space goals in Greenville twenty forty.
Shannon, does the mitigation fee go into a separate account similar to the tree ordinance fees?
Yes, that's what we would ask for that, both the open space and the affordable. That we can then use those funds in a way, we would bring forth a policy and ask council how to direct those funds moving forward.
And, and who will manage that? Have we decided who will manage those funds?
Suspect that open space will be managed by planning and that affordable housing will be managed by community development.
Shannon, another question here. Has, has it, has any attempt at forecasting, I recognize this is not yet in place, but the two fifty fee for both these categories, is it possible to forecast what we'd expect based on our growth rate and what other communities have seen that have similar fee structures?
No, not at this time because the rental markets right now are so volatile and it's, I mean, it's, financing in the market right now is pretty difficult for rental projects. So we just, we don't have an idea that yet. I think we'll have an idea within the first six months once we start to see the code actually adopted. But we don't really have an idea at this point about the, about the funds. The tree ordinance though, within the first year, I think we had over three hundred thousand dollars collected within the first year.
And I don't think we, we didn't anticipate that.
No.
At all.
We put seed money in, you know, to get it started, but after that.
I think right now we have about four seventy-six in tree. We've got more than that. So, I think that, you know, the opportunity is there for, to take those funds and then use them for land banking, for affordable housing, land banking for open space.
Shannon, could we get an update on the tree ordinance fund and at some point in the near future? Put that on the agenda.
Okay. Think we need to go back one slide please. Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, a bit more on open space. Staff worked with legal to, to make sure that our open space provisions were correct. We did have to work with our legal team on that. The applicants may still pay a fee-in lieu amount to the city's open space fund or they may provide an open space easement that meets the new criteria for outdoor amenity space contained within the code. Has a contiguous natural undeveloped area suitable for environmental preservation or is in a location suitable for active or passive outdoor recreational use? The new open space provided through the code will require engagement and coordination with the community, neighborhoods, and advocacy organizations to determine the appropriate utilization, such as passive recreation, conservation, et cetera, for specific open space parcels. And I know that, that's something that we want to bring to y'all as a policy related to that once we get the code finalized. As we start to try to build our open space fund and acquire more and more open space, it's ensuring that we're setting aside open space that allows for environmental protection, sustainability in the future, passive recreation. We don't intend this to all be, you know, things that we add into our park system. These are, these are expected to be long-term open spaces that stay in their natural form.
Also, one of the challenges of the tree ordinance was people have opted to pay the fee more than we would have expected instead of planting new trees. So I hope we'll make it very attractive for people to not pay the fee, to, to do the open space on-site.
I think that that was the goal, we're trying to add some options so that we weren't just incentivizing the fee.
But, so, in, in, in the canopy objectives, you know, give, I think it's like eighty-five percent is on private property of the tree canopy we have, something like that. You know, our abilities to, to replenish the canopy is not only in incentivizing with the tree ordinance and relooking at that, but also in our acquiring open space and building canopy within what we.
Some open space last year and we're constantly trying to find land to acquire for open space. And even if it's, I mean, think about it, even if today it's, you know, vacant parking lot, let's say. We could acquire it and remove the parking lot and just leave it as natural space. Then we return something back to open space. And I think that we're looking for all of those types of opportunities and should try to be creative with how we look at trying to acquire open space for the city.
And we're talking about conservation easements, right? And we're talking about, could be trees, woods.
That's right.
Could be just open weekend.
That's right. It could be, it can be completely wooded. What we want to do is leave as much of our community into green or open space that is left undeveloped or retarded to that state as we can. Okay. Next slide please. With the right, with the by-right nature of the development code and predictability provided by the new form-based standards, fewer projects will require review and approval by a board or commission. Public hearing requirements have been aligned with state law. All review board meetings will continue to be public meetings. Neighborhood meetings are not required by state law and were not initially included with the first draft. However, in response to feedback from our neighborhood representatives, development public meetings will be required for some projects. The zoning administrator will prepare and publish the procedural requirements for development public meetings when the, to the city websites. When the development public meetings are required, the development public meeting must occur before submitting the application so that the community can provide input and learn about upcoming projects. The roles and responsibilities of each new board are provided in the code. The Design Review Board Neighborhood Panel has been renamed the Historic Review Board to reflect its areas of responsibility more accurately. The Historic Review Board will now have approval authority over demolitions of historic structures within the Central Business District as well as structures in preservation overlay districts. In addition, the Design Review Board, her view has expanded to encompass key areas of interest, namely Pendleton Street and the Village of West Greenville, the West End Neighborhood, the Unity Park Neighborhood District, and the East North Street Gateway. And I think my, my, my belief is that I think that the expanded boundaries of the DRB have been well-received by the communities that are impacted by this. I, I'm of the impression that they are happy to see the DRB's review board, review, review area expanded. Okay. The new code will allow for accessory dwelling units on lots that can support them. Must comply with all requirements for the zoning district in which they are proposed, including setbacks, sidewall heights, building coverage, et cetera. In addition, ADUs are not permitted in areas where they are prohibited by deed restriction or HOA covenant. Units may not be utilized for short-term rentals in residential districts as lodging uses are limited to downtown and commercial zones. Now, based on input received from our neighborhood residents, we did make a lot of modifications to the ADU ordinance from the time it was released to the time it is now. And I think that we were able to resolve a lot of concerns by the change, the changes that we made. We did add an owner occupancy requirement and we did add a scalability dimension similar to how the city of Asheville does it. And I want to thank the North Main Neighborhood Association for their research. They did a survey of their residents. Over two hundred and thirty residents responded and the primary return on that showed that the majority were in favor or neutral about ADUs. And a very small percentage were completely adamantly opposed.
Well, I'd say, I think it was close to sixty percent supported it with some amendments considered and then twenty, no, sixty percent. Anyway, it was eighty percent either supported it or supported with some, some, some small amendments, so eighty percent out of. So it was a big number.
Big number.
Yeah.
And so.
And those amendments were part of what we adopted, right?
That's right. C adopted all of that. So I feel really proud of the work that we were able to do within concert with our neighborhoods to get to an area where we could reach compromise on the ADUs. And so I thank our neighborhoods for helping with that. Short-term rentals. Our current LMO does not specifically address short-term rentals. Instead, the city has classified them as a hotel or bread and bed, bed and breakfast inn. The new development code specifically lists short-term rentals under the lodging use category. Short-term rentals are therefore only permitted in districts where lodging is allowed by the table of uses, MX, MXS, BG, BH, IX, and CM districts. The original draft included lodging with up to ten rooms as special exceptions in the RC districts, but these were removed. They are now prohibited in all residential districts. And this is in direct response to the input that we received from our neighborhoods that they wanted to preserve their neighborhoods and protect them against short-term rentals. And in particular, one of the areas that I'll highlight later is the Pettigrew District in which we have received numerous requests for, for short-term rentals. And it has been something that the neighborhood has been vehemently opposed to for the last several multiple months that we've been dealing with it. And we specifically tried to make sure that we were responsive to short-term rentals with this code. Next slide. Drive-throughs were limits, were initially limited in the code with the goals of reducing curb cuts and creating a walkable built environment. Greenville's development community strongly opposes this limitation and requested they be restored as an allowed use throughout the city. Drive-throughs were then added to the BG district as a permitted use and the MX districts as a special exception. This will allow drive-throughs to most nodes and corridors throughout the city. To ensure protections for neighborhoods and in an effort to limit the impacts, new use standards for drive-throughs were added with provisions for screening, design consistency, location standards, sound limits, and more. Staff worked together with owners and operators of certain automobile-oriented uses like gas stations to look at things such as building orientation and accessory structures such as car washes. Staff proposed language to allow existing fueling stations to make improvements and even redevelop without triggering certain elements of the code that they had concerns about. We understand that council may have additional changes for some of the provisions for fueling station. Staff met with a fueling station owner after the planning commission last week and is supportive of additional modifications to this section that works for both sides. Campus districts. Eleven point six percent of the land area in the city has a proposed campus zoning classification of CM. This applies to uses such as universities, hospitals, schools, and major parks. The modifications prepared by staff and recommended by planning commission allow additional flexibility for these uses to comply with the code while also meeting their unique needs.
Shannon, at what point will the modifications to fueling stations be suggested?
So, I think we're.
Two hours.
Comfortable. And I think there's an amendment that's going to be.
Okay. Great.
Shannon, on the, I'm sorry, on the, um, drive-throughs and auto-oriented. So special exception in MX means it will go before the BZA.
Yes.
BZA has to approve it with a public comment allowed.
Yes. Public hearing, kind of public notification, specific use numbers. Okay. Zoning map. As information, council has two ordinances on the agenda this evening. The first one for the development code, which establishes the districts. The second ordinance applies to the new districts to property throughout the city. Procedurally, the code has to be adopted first and then the map. The new zoning map applies to districts from the new development code every parcel in the city limits. At a high level, the proposed zoning map reflects the node and corridor development pattern adopted as policy in Greenville twenty forty. Most neighborhoods have been assigned zoning districts that match the prevailing lot pattern to limit future subdivision of parcels into small lots that would be inconsistent with existing neighborhood rhythm. In areas where general density is proposed either as an affordability solution or to reflect development patterns, R and A, R and B, or R and C zoning may have been applied. RNXB and RNXC have been proposed as transition districts in certain areas between neighborhoods and more intense commercial or mixed-use districts. With their allowances for smaller-scale retail and commercial uses, RNXB and RNXC have also been applied where businesses are desired in proximity to neighborhoods as well as along certain roadways where commercial development has maintained a residential scale and appearance and should remain capped at two and a half or three stories. Most of the potential nodes suggested by Greenville twenty forty have been given an MX and MXS zoning designation. These districts are also featured prominently on the major transportation corridors that connect the nodes. The centers of nodes provide the greatest height and then step down around the edges. The new business districts have been applied outside the nodes and along major roadways where the existing development pattern is dependent on particular access, such as Haywood Mall and the major commercial areas along Woodruff Road. Many of these areas have C three, S one, or PD zoning under current LMO. BH is similar to BG but also allows for automobile sales and services. Hence the application of BH for the car dealerships along Lawrence Road. The special districts of CM, Campus, CD, Civic, and PK, Park have been assigned to properties for which these districts were intended. The C four business district has been replaced with MXD and MXSD designations. Downtown Greenville will continue to serve as the central hub of the city. And while the base MXD and MXSD districts do not contain height maximums, certain areas are subject to a new height map that will be in effect upon the adoption of the new code and zoning map. This slide shows the proposed height map and new expanded design review boundary. Height map is applied most widely throughout the West End and was informed by the West End Small Area Plan. Buildings subject to the height map may not exceed the number of stories indicated on the map. The design review boundary has been expanded beyond the current limits of today's C four and now covers parcels in multiple zoning districts. The proposed limits include all of the new MXD and MXSD zoning districts. In addition, design review will now be required along both sides of Pendleton Street to and throughout the Village of West Greenville, on parts of Academy Street in the West End, along both sides of East North Street to Stone Avenue, and for all properties located generally between Bernie Street and West Washington Street, including the city-owned Mayberry Street Parcels and other properties within the vicinity of Unity Park. The extension across Academy Street was made at the request of the West End Neighborhood. So we thank them for that. Okay. Protecting our parks. I know Tara cares about this. She's here somewhere, but she was. One feature of the new code and map that we've not spoken to you much previously is the new park zoning district. This is an important part of our new code. The new PK or park zoning classification has been applied to city-owned parks throughout the city as well as Conestee Nature Park. Purpose of this zoning district is to help ensure these spaces are reserved for natural areas of recreation for the community in perpetuity. And I think that's really important to remember. That is the intent of this zoning classification is to preserve those parks in perpetuity. Previously, many of our parks had a residential or commercial zoning district. And that's, I mean, to me, if you have a single-family zoning district on top of a park and it's meant to be a park, then what does that say to the community? And so we've corrected that in this new code. We've, we fixed this issue and provided a new district that is specific to parks and provides specific regulations and limits as to the types of uses and development that can occur within the city's parks. I think it's interesting to note that now five point five percent of our total land area will be zone PK. That's significant to meeting our long-term goals as a community.
Shannon, do you know off the top of your head the single-family residential percent?
Thirty-six percent under the new code.
More than what was before.
Is, when you take out the parks in Conestee, yes.
But we, we've increased that zoning from where we are right now.
That's right.
In terms of coverage.
Okay. I would like to take a few minutes and go through some of the modifications that have been recommended for the new code and map. These are the staff's recommended changes that were included with the planning commission's recommendation to City Council. Next slide please. Staff met with numerous groups and individuals throughout the review process. We have responded to thousands of emails and written comments since the original draft was posted in January. All staff recommended changes were published on April twenty eighth. Staff reviewed and considered all map changes in context of surrounding zoning, existing uses, Greenville twenty forty, and planning principles. On May first, the city also released an updated interactive zoning map on its website that included all recommended map changes. Next slide. The vast majority of changes were made in response to individual requests from property owners. Many actually resulted in a more restrictive zoning district, while others requested increased height or intensity at a particular location. Staff reviewed each of these carefully before posting them as part of our official list of recommended changes. Some of the highlights include changes in the recommended zoning districts for churches, especially those on Augusta Road and Cleveland Street, but others throughout the city as well. Back to a residential district that aligns with their current zoning today. Back to a residential district that aligned with their current zoning today. In other areas of the city, such as around the intersection of Washington and Lawrence and along North Church Street, staff worked with property owners on increases for some of these parcels. Next slide. In Verde, we listened
Hey, I'm sorry, Shannon. Back to the church thing? I'm sorry, can you go back one? The, the, what I heard you say over and over at the PC was it, the, the, the change that y'all made post-first draft was, was basically going to a like-for-like zoning on all those churches along Augusta, the four of them, I think there were four, and you reexamined every other single-church property.
That's right. And so
But it is resulting in split zoning on some of them.
It is.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the church is the property owner.
Correct.
The church has the right to request a zoning change at any time, as any property owner
As any property owner.
They are the property owner. Now, I'm not aware of any church intending to do so, but the property rights of those individual owners are, are just, you know, are important to note.
Thank you. In Verde, we listened to planning commission, the neighborhood representatives in Verde, and Verde Development to reach agreement on a campus zoning designation around Legacy Square. Parties that staff worked with over the last several months appear to be satisfied and supportive of this path forward. And I, you know, I have to really give them credit because we, we asked both sides to work together to help us make sure that we got it right. And I feel like everyone really did try to work together on this. And I think we all understand the expectations moving forward with the city, with Verde, with the neighborhood. And I think that this is a good example of, you know, what can happen when you do try to work together to figure out. And we know we have something here, we know what both sides want, and we've tried to come up with a solution that works for all of us. And I think you'll hear several people tonight speaking support of that.
The Verde people in their emails have been extremely complimentary of, of your staff and willingness to work together.
It turned out to be kind of early training for this process, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, they've been great to work with. We had, we had a lot of interaction with H Bob, the Hogsworth Board of Boards, for many months leading up to the release of the code.
I just want to be clear on that Legacy Square. By virtue, from my understanding, by virtue of being CM, campus zoning, they are required to do a master plan process?
Well, they don't have to, but we know that they have. They have done a master plan process.
Uh, how are they held to that master plan?
Through the administrator.
Okay, and that's you?
That's me.
Okay. So, as the
Never know that tomorrow.
I'm just trying to make sure. I'm just trying to make sure the community's voice, the community's voice that shaped the master plan for that lives in perpetuity, so to speak.
It does, because if I'm not here tomorrow, I can guarantee you that the rest of my staff that's here knows the clear expectations of the community. Before any permits are released, the administrator has final approval.
And you, you would review that against that master plan would be the logical step?
That's right. Thanks.
Shannon, I'll just seize the opportunity. We're gonna speak about this a little bit, the formal meeting at five thirty, but it's also worth pointing out to Shannon's comments about the collaborative work of the parties involved, that, that we understand there's efforts underway to establish certain deed restrictions that will further govern development there. So, those are, those are outside the purview of the city, but certainly endorsed and encouraged by the city. And we have an expectation they'll arrive at mutually satisfactory ASAP.
I know that was important to some residents, as said in the PC here.
We also met numerous times with representatives of certain business categories, such as drive-throughs and fueling stations. We were able to adjust the zoning to accommodate many of their requests as staff believes the modifications provide significant flexibility for existing fueling stations to expand, remodel, and even rebuild in a manner as requested by these businesses. And I think it's important to note that if you go back and look at the majority of people who spoke out against the code the first public hearing and compare it to, to those who spoke against the code the second public hearing, you're not gonna find a lot of weak points because we really worked hard from the first public hearing to the second public hearing to address those comments. Finally, as part of our final review, staff identified a few small parcels or even pieces of parcels that did not have a proposed zoning district, most likely caught because of a technical mapping error. We have listed and provided suggesting zoning classifications for these in the modifications document. I think that's really important to note. I think that there is a understanding that this mapping is very simple to do. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of skill and technical, um, behind-the-scenes that goes into this mapping and it's, it can't, it, I mean, there's shape files that are involved. It cannot always just be parcel by parcel because it's zoning. Um, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of technicality that goes into using GIS, geographic information systems, to create zoning mapping. And so, I think it's important to note that sometimes, you know, it may, it's, it's so technical and it's so involved, that there are gonna be minor mistakes, but also if there's changes or people have information requests, it can't always be something that we can produce as easy as we want to because of the fact that there's so much technical behind the scenes that goes involved. It's not, it's not an easy process. Okay. I touched on this briefly, but there were slight adjustments to the text in the development bonus section. These were made to match the wording in state law. We also updated the open space section to provide new standards for open space easements. To qualify for dedication, open space easements must, one, meet the criteria for outdoor amenity space contained in the new code. Two, have a contiguous natural undeveloped area suitable for environmental preservation. Or three, be in a location suitable for active or passive outdoor recreational use. As I stated earlier, ADUs, staff provided additional requirements which were published in the March fifteenth draft. Since then, we added the sliding scale chart, which caps the ADU size at eighty percent of the primary dwelling. And we already talked about the majority of Greenville residents were supportive of ADUs. Drive-throughs. Staff updated the table of uses to allow drive-throughs again, whereas they were previously limited to only a few districts. In exchange, staff proposed standards to help limit the impact of drive-throughs, most notably against residential neighborhoods. Order windows cannot face an RH district. There are the new standards for stacking lanes. Drive-through elements must be compatible with the overall building design. And developers must receive a special exception permit for any drive-through in an MX two, MX three, or MX five district. These standards allow the option for drive-throughs in many of the same locations that are permitted today. Fueling stations. Staff met repeatedly with fueling station representatives concerned, more than anything else, about the build-to requirements in many of the zoning districts. These would have required the fuel islands and canopies to be located to the side or rear of the building. Staff worked with fueling station owners to address many of their concerns. As mentioned earlier, we understand that council may have an additional change for some of these provisions.
I thought the last, the last comment, the last one on there was the only remaining issue I knew about, about the demolition. And this is not a new issue. We've had this actually happen in the past when they wanted to make improvements, but can't do it because they have to, not conform.
So, we have an amendment tonight for that one?
I saw, I saw that, but I thought, is it what she's already referring to, to do that?
Okay. Next, I want to talk about the public process that we've gone through for this project. The city has done more outreach for this development code update than any project in city history. I mentioned public process and education. Every month since January twenty twenty-two, we've had an education session and interactive public sessions on this new code. We have a dedicated project website that, as of today, has over twenty-eight thousand unique visitors to the site. That's not repeat traffic. Those are individuals who have wanted to learn about the code. We have spoken about this project at neighborhood meetings, public presentations, and many other public settings for the past year and a half. I applaud the work of our communications department and public relations manager for their passion and dedication to this project. Our online engagement throughout this process is unprecedented for our community.
Anybody, can anybody offer perspective on that twenty-eight thousand unique to a specific, specifically created city website? I'd be curious to know just for relativity what the second most visited site is.
Typically, events and parks are very popular, but we can look and see if there's been any other policy-related issue that has seen this level of
Yeah. It's true, it's true curiosity about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet a dollar with somebody that's
Anything about the giraffe would probably be your
Oh, the giraffe, the giraffe feeding
Unity Park and Falls Park are usually one and two.
Yeah.
But I would suspect that, you know, again, if, by comparison and by volume, this has been unprecedented in terms of public outreach and communications, not only digitally, but
I mean, we got pretty excited within the past couple of years at something that escapes me when we had about seven hundred respondents.
Oh, yeah.
I think that was, was that Augusta Street?
Maybe. I'm not, I'm not belittling that. I'm just saying from a relative standpoint, to your point.
And I think Shannon can say anecdotally, too, the number of people that attended the meetings was
Yes. Before our consultants even started working on the code or map, city council asked them to come and study five distinct areas of the city to become more intimately familiar with our community and with Greenville. These areas included Greater Sullivan, Mainstone, Rutherford-Bunkham Corridor, North Lawrence Road, McAllister Square, Augusta, Malden, Pleasant Corridor. We had public open houses for each of these study areas and worked with committees of business owners and neighborhood representatives in each. This was yet another step in the process of our consultants to understand Greenville and create a zoning map that works for our community. And that was done in April of last year. We had those open houses in April last year. I think we did two or three days of open houses throughout the community.
Shannon, on the Augusta Corridor, are we, uh, are we considering the non-annexed parcels in that, in that district?
Yes, and we would like to eventually annex those.
Good answer.
Good. I'm glad to know that. In terms of our code rollout, this slide is a small snapshot of all the work the city has done since January. And it's a lot. I mean, it has been night and day by not just my team, but multiple city staff members throughout this organization. And a few more statistics by the numbers. Nine learning labs, thirteen digital postcards, seventeen webpages generating twenty-eight thousand unique visitors, twenty-one videos, seventy-five public and neighborhood meetings, hundreds of social media posts, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight comments submitted online, one-thousand signs, twenty-one thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-six direct mail postcards, and unlimited public comments accepted, even through this afternoon. There's been a lot of concern in the past few weeks about what the new code means for our existing neighborhoods, especially our single-family neighborhoods. I want to share with you what we presented at planning commission last Monday. Greenville is not about to become part of a list that eliminates single-family zoning. Greenville's new code retains single-family zoning through its proposed residential house-scale districts. The consultants analyzed existing parcel sizes and prevailing development patterns in Greenville's neighborhoods as part of the process of applying the new district classifications to properties throughout the city. Most properties zone R nine today, which is a minimum lot size of nine thousand square feet, have been reassigned RHB designations, minimum lot sizes nine thousand square feet. And most properties zone R six today, minimum lot sizes six thousand square feet, have been recommended as RHD, minimum lot sizes of six thousand square feet. Other areas with even larger lots, such as Stone Lake and Gower, have been given an RHA zoning, a new residential district with minimum lot sizes of eighteen thousand square feet due to the larger prevailing lot sizes in these neighborhoods. Meanwhile, a new small lot house-scale designation, RHD, with minimum lot sizes of three thousand square feet, have been assigned to neighborhoods with even smaller common lot sizes, including areas of Verde, North Main, and West Greenville. This rightsizing of residential districts is an important part of the update process and is intended to preserve existing neighborhoods by preventing incompatibility for small subdivision lots and limiting the bulk and mass of new construction. Existing homes are not affected by the rezoning and may be, may rebuild to their original footprint if destroyed by a fire or natural disaster. What else does this code do for neighborhoods? It provides transitions between commercial buildings that abut residential properties. The commercial business is required to have a larger setback, provide a fence and landscape buffer, and they must set their upper floor back away from the residential property. This is another critical feature of the code that protects our neighborhoods and is something that our current code does not allow. Instead, a forty-foot-tall building to be built by right, five feet from the property line. We've heard repeated comments that the current zoning is better. I would say that these transition standards surpass any of the alleged neighborhood protections in our current zoning code today. Because the new code is a form-based code, it includes more specific standards for height, mass, and bulk of buildings. Each residential district includes not only an overall building height, but a sidewall height, as well for primary structures and accessory structures. These don't exist in our existing code. These are intended to help protect new homes from looming over their neighbors and to help preserve the character and integrity of our residential districts. You know, a lot of that has come from the work of our infill studies from both twenty-fourteen and again in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. And they really help to inform this code, and I think that's really important. And height, mass, and bulk, what we heard from our infill committees as to what concerned them about being able to protect their neighborhood, the rhythm, the character. Another important part of the new code that helps protect neighborhoods is new subdivision standards. These are largely missing from our current code. The new code provides regulations for lot size in each zoning district. Because we have rightsized the zoning districts for each neighborhood, these subdivision standards will help ensure new residential lots are more consistent in size and layout than our current code provides. Lots also have building coverage maximums so that huge homes don't take up the entire parcel. Lastly, the code removes cottage subdivisions as these by nature will allow result in redevelopment of large residential properties into incompatible small lots with inconsistent building configurations.
Thank you.
The next few slides have a few examples of how the new code protects neighborhoods better than our current LMO. On this slide, we look at a three-acre lot in Gower. Under today's R six zoning, a developer could build a cul-de-sac and probably add as many as twelve to fourteen homes with lot sizes as small as six thousand square feet. Or they could propose a cottage subdivision with as many as twenty-one homes. Under the new RHA zoning, three lots. Three lots. That's it. Because of the new minimum lot size of eighteen thousand square feet and the minimum width requirement of eighty feet. Staff believes the RHA zoning and new development code provide much more protection for this neighborhood.
I like your disclaimer.
Yeah.
The one on the bottom, yeah.
But the real question in my mind is, while those lots, I'm wondering what other in circa May twenty-twenty-three are pending cottage subdivisions?
Well, I'm gonna talk about that in just a sec here. This site is located in the Sterling neighborhood. Sterling is one of our neighborhoods where the code has facilitated gentrification and incompatible development that towers over the existing codes. This is due to the current RM one zoning. Under the new code, much of Sterling will go to RHD, which is a single-family district. On this slide, a developer could build six three-story townhomes where almost everything around it is a one-story single-family residence or duplex. Under the proposed RHD, a maximum of five single-family homes could go there. No townhomes, no apartments. This zoning provides new certainty and predictability for a neighborhood that is currently experiencing much change and uncertainty. Next example. Let's look at the Pettigrew District. Much of this neighborhood is in a historic district with predominant single-family residences from Greenville's past. However, the zoning of OD is the same current zoning as our hospitals and universities, completely inappropriate for our historic neighborhood. More recently, the neighborhood has been subject to numerous applications for short-term rentals. Many of the homes have been converted to professional offices, but many residents still remain. The proposed RNXB zoning allows for a robust mix of residential and small-scale commercial, including professional offices. It also stops the conversion of this special neighborhood to a hotel suite by disallowing short-term rentals. In summary, this is another example of how the code helps protect our neighborhoods. You may hear concerns this evening about non-conforming provisions of this code. We want to provide some information to council concerning non-conformies. Non-conforming uses are a standard and ordinary part of zoning. And our current land management ordinance In our current land management ordinance in effect today, a non-conforming structure that is damaged to the extent of fifty percent or more of its replacement value can only be repaired or restored, except in conformance with the standards for the zoning district in which it is located. The city cannot force non-conforming homes to make changes upon adoption of a zoning ordinance. Non-conforming structures can make improvements, renovate, and expand under the new code. Staff has recommended a provision that will allow non-conforming homes destroyed by fire or natural disaster to be rebuilt. This is new to the development code and not, and is not allowed under the current LMO.
And when you say rebuild, you mean they can rebuild.
Where they're currently at.
Where they're currently at.
Same size, same footprint, everything.
So they could be rebuilt in a non-conforming nature?
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Which allows more flexibility than the existing code today.
Exactly.
What's the percentage change, do you know, from non-conformity, non-conforming in today's code versus this?
We don't know, but most of the examples that our staff looked at.
Is it just too hard to quantify?
It's too hard to quantify, but we, we had a specific property that we looked at and nothing about that specific property was non-conforming under the new code.
And whether you believe it or not, over the years, that one code that does not allow you to rebuild is the reason we got such a piecemeal ordinance. When people had fires, all was damaged due to hell. They couldn't rebuild using the other one. So they had to do something a little different. So then you got all this exception to this, an exception to that. My Lord.
Okay. These standards are also consistent with most insurance policies and FEMA requirements that will enable all residences to continue to remain in their current condition unless the owner decides to redevelop. Again, these sections are already part of the code.
Your insurance isn't helping, oh my God. That needs to be made, made public. Well, well, I'm just saying, that's important.
We shared this information about non-conformities with the public and presented it at Planning Commission last week. No additional actions are needed to add them. I have just a few final points to wrap up before I hand it back over to y'all. So I'm almost done. I know y'all just thrilled. Part of the balance achieved in Greenville 2040 was allowing greater height density along nodes in exchange for preserving and strengthening existing neighborhoods. The new zoning districts provide varying levels of height and density that, when applied through the new zoning map, create an interconnected series of nodes, corridors, and neighborhoods. The proposed code and map will provide for greater development opportunity at the center of identified nodes, with the intensity stepping down as property transitions into neighborhoods and along the corridors. Nodes do not have firmly defined boundaries or as they are expected to develop organically and evolve over time. City council may consider future rezonings around nodes in response to changing development conditions. Corridors are higher-density, high-mobility thoroughfares that connect the nodes. This framework preserves existing neighborhood character while enabling growth. Just as each neighborhood is different, each node and corridor is different too. Not every node has the same zoning layout. Similarly, not every corridor has the same height or development allowances, and it can even change as you drive down the corridor. The recommended zoning along different corridors was based on previous planning efforts, community input, existing traffic, number of lanes, location within the city, and potential for future redevelopment. We were intentional. We looked at each area individually and tried to look at it from a professional planning expertise level. And so to try to start comparing areas is unfair to the community. We were intentional, and we looked at each area individually.
So Shannon, a question for clarification. Hearing you say that the nodes presently and intentionally lack specific boundaries, wouldn't, wouldn't in effect, the zoning designations found through the map, even though that's subject to change over time, illustrate where the bounds of the nodes are?
It does, but you, when you see the actual zoning, but the idea is that as we evolve over time through the rezoning process, we anticipate that the nodes are going to modify.
It's a living document.
That's right.
But at a snapshot in time, one could reasonably say there's a node.
That's right. You could look at tonight's zoning and say, that's a node. While most corridors throughout the city typically feature an MX two designation, several locations along our corridors near downtown provide good opportunities for slightly more density, given their context and adjacency to high-volume roadways. Lawrence Road at East Washington is a good example of this concept, especially given the expansion of the Swamp Private Trail currently underway in this area. And as a reminder, we look at the Swamp Private Trail as a transportation corridor. It is a transportation corridor and a transportation network. Additionally, the East North Street Gateway into downtown demonstrates higher density while providing a zoning transition between the urban core and the pedigree historic district. Along North Church, North Church Street and East Stone Avenue, the convergence of the major thoroughfares creates an opportunity for a small node with some slightly higher density, which is what we've seen with the emergence of the North Point Development. The intersection of North Main Street and Stone Avenue also presents an opportunity as a bookend at the north end of Main Street with a higher density of mixed uses, which could be similar in scale to the existing main project. Pete Hollis Boulevard is a major gateway into our downtown with six lanes of traffic and increases intensity as you approach the urban core. The intersection of West Stone Avenue and Pete Hollis is the first major intersection as you approach downtown from the west and creates a significant opportunity for increased height and density. South Academy presents a similar condition along a major six-lane thoroughfare and offers an opportunity for increased density along a heavily trafficked road while buffering the adjacent community. It, it is also important to keep in mind that our new development code will force new development in these zones of higher density to be buffered from the adjacent neighborhoods through the application of enlarged setbacks, architectural setbacks, landscaping, and fencing. These final few slides talk about the importance from staff's perspective of adopting the new code with all due expediency. We fully recognize and appreciate the city council has the final authority of the, over the city zoning ordinance and zoning map. Staff has made every effort to work with the community to create a code that responds to the concerns of the public and which advances the goals and priorities of Greenville 2040. Until the new code is adopted, the current land management ordinance remains in effect. For the last few slides, we want to share what that means for the city today. The existing LMO is unwieldy and contradictory. It provides years of it as a staff member or developer working extensively with the code to figure out its many intricacies and honestly gotcha provisions that can either kill a project or put it on a path of approval with negative impacts to the community. The current LMO lacks predictability in development outcomes. With its text-heavy format, there are no clear standards for development. Everything is on a case-by-case basis or subject to the interpretation of the staff member working on the permit. This is inequitable and not fair to our existing neighborhoods and developers. There's no affordable housing incentives, no open space incentives, and its suburban development patterns. Code has high parking minimums, development standards that are not appropriate for our urban community, and focuses on separating land uses. The current code also has artificially low-density caps that make affordable housing extremely difficult to develop. Speaking of density, the main tool to provide affordable housing and the increased density to support it is through a planned development. PDs are antithetical, I don't love that word very much, but. To providing a predictable development code and relies on tense negotiation between the city, the developer, and the community. And I think that that's so important because we are not allowing for PDs in this new code. And I think that we've all been through what happens during the PDs and then tense negotiations and how both sides usually feels like they have lost. Um, and I think it's telling about this code versus the ability for PD when we have letters of support for this code coming in from both sides that were on the last PD that we faced. So now we have letters of support for this code from people who were on one side or the other about last PD. Speaking of density, the main tool to provide affordable housing and the increased density to support it is through the, oh, I'm sorry. I already said that. I just want to make sure y'all didn't.
Hey, just a quick question to, uh, legal and you, when you say adopted, it's a, it's formally an official documents after second vote, correct?
Yes.
But after first vote, does it have any effect?
Depending ordinance doctrine.
Depending ordinance doctrine. Okay, cool. All right. And, and my understanding is, Shannon, you have an example of development that may have been?
It's coming up.
Okay.
Many of our residential neighborhoods, including Oliver Day, are zoned S one, service and industrial district. As our former Planning Commission chairperson commented during a public hearing, S one zoning allows everything from tattoo parlors to nuclear power plants. No residential neighborhood should have S one zoning. Our parks and recreation areas currently have residential or commercial zoning, leaving the subject to redevelopment at the city's discretion with no public review or input process. And I think that y'all probably heard that several times in your service in council about, uh, areas that were designated as parks that now are not, where people thought they would be designated as parks and now they're not. And so with five point five percent of our land now designated as parks, those are anticipated to be protected in perpetuity. Next slide, please. The existing LMO contributes to gentrification and incompatible development. This is due to the incompatible development in massive homes that our current code allows by right, regardless of the specific neighborhood or surrounding context. Special emphasis neighborhoods have multifamily zoning. We've seen that, a lot of that in recent years. Many neighborhoods at risk of subdivisions with incompatible lots. Remember the examples we looked at a few slides ago. We have worked to right-size the zoning and actually increase single-family zoning throughout the city. Believe it or not, our current LMO is missing key elements of basic subdivision regulations. There are no standards for lots. Many districts have no minimum lot sizes. We've muddled through with a combination of engineering and fire code standards, but the current LMO gives very little guidance as to how subdivisions could occur. This last one, cottage subdivisions. Our current code permits these in all residential districts. They were originally considered to be an incentive for affordable housing because of their decreased infrastructure requirements. But they almost always result in market-rate housing. The standards are inconsistent and arguably undermine other parts of the LMO. Cottage subdivisions are extremely problematic for all neighborhoods. Last week, Planning Commission approved one in the Neckletown neighborhood against the strong desire of the neighborhood and under extreme protest from the Planning Commission themselves. However, it met the technical requirements for cottage subdivision, and Planning Commission had no legal basis to deny the application. If you didn't see the Planning Commission meeting from last Thursday, I would encourage all of y'all to watch it if you have any concerns about why we may need a new code. Um, our Planning Commission chair, who's been the chair for quite some time and has been on the Planning Commission in DRB for many, many years of service, um, I've never seen her get upset, actually cried during the meeting about having to feel like that they were in a position of having to approve the development, not because they were against the development, not because they were against the developer, but because they felt like they didn't have a way to deny something that they didn't feel right about. And this code is trying to address things like cottage subdivisions that maybe had a good intention but haven't been able to live that good intention. That's why, too, we want the six-month review and the annual review. So that if we find things that were good intentions but couldn't live through that intention, that we change them and we don't just live with it, live with it, live with it, and then we get a decision that we can't undo. Next slide. The current LMO has outdated parking requirements and design standards. Our current sign regulations do not align with recent case law and could be subject to legal challenges. Our current LMO has insufficient transition standards between residential and commercial development. There are no sidewall heights, which results in tall buildings constructed right at the setback line. Conditional use permits are problematic for applicants and neighbors. And finally, car washes in many storages are permitted in many locations. While there are many more issues with the current code, these are but some of the big reasons why staff believes the new development code should proceed as quickly as council is comfortable with. At their meeting last week, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the code and zoning map to city council with modifications. The Planning Commission modifications included inclusion of the staff modifications as posted on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. A review of the code shall be conducted after six and twelve months with reviews every twelve months thereafter. A review of the code shall be conducted after three months for fueling stations, non-conformities, and Table four point one point one standards pertaining to adaptive reuse projects. These conditions were written into the ordinance document that is on your agenda this evening.
Do we know the structure of their review process yet?
Well, we, what we have done is we have created a document that aligns with our code. And every issue that comes in, we're already putting it in that is specific to that section of the code. So we've already started to keep a list of what we think might need to be reviewed. And we would bring it back for review at the end of the six months and anything that we thought were changes for their concurrence. Um, and then we would bring it forward to you all for adoption once, if they concur with what we are recommending. And they may not concur with everything. We'd only bring forward what they think needs to be modified. Last slide. Updating an entire development code is an extremely challenging undertaking. Most cities across the country are using antiquated codes originally adopted in the eighties and oftentimes earlier that have been updated in piecemeal fashion and duct taped together over the years. Communities shy away from a full code rewrite because of the work concerned over public discipline and fear of change. Many update efforts start strong but lose momentum over endless small details, letting the perfect get in the way of good. With Greenville 2040, the Greenville community demonstrated its readiness and desire to do things differently and to tackle big issues head-on. It's unlikely that any person or business will be completely satisfied with the new code in its initial form. But the city has pledged and is committing itself to do so with the adoption of the ordinance to review and refine the code on an ongoing basis in the coming years to ensure it works for Greenville and achieves the outcomes our community deserves. I'd like to thank the staff for all their work. That takes.
Shannon, if I can fill some space before you move into this section and just ask that we keep the questions to questions and make sure that we keep to the purpose of work session. That's all.
I've got a question in common.
Sure.
I will try to politely not.
She wants you to just ask.
Overstep. Yeah. Questions for clarification, receiving information, completely appropriate.
Um, one of the things that's become more readily apparent to me throughout this entire process is the role of, um, covenants.
Yes.
And, and, and part of the question I have every time someone comes up to me about that is, um, how many, how many does the city of Greenville recognizing the relationship between the municipal entity and the private property owners that, you know, these covenants are between? How many do we actually know about? And, and how many other valid ones might be out there? So that's more of a statement. Um, it's just been kind of enlightening to me because it seems like every time another week comes around, somebody says, oh, I got this from nineteen fifty-eight. Is there any type of software product or system that's commonly used either in our planning office or elsewhere that somehow helps an entity, you know, received from the Red Shore Deeds or received from any valid credible source that recognizes the validity of these things and at least flags so that we know when there's something out there that we might want to be aware of?
I don't know of any. We don't enforce restrictive covenants, but under state law, if we're, if we're told that there's a restrictive covenant, then we can't issue a building permit if it's in, if it's against the restrictive covenant.
And maybe just the last question tied to that. So I, I know as an elected representative, I feel like a lot of times I'm either stumbled upon or somebody kindly brings it up and then there's a matchmaking game, like, well, who needs to know? Um, is that generally how this works? Okay.
So Will, if you, I'll weigh in too. There's a state statute that requires the city to inquire with people who are applying for permits to certify whether or not their plans violate any known covenants and restrictions.
That's part of our formal procedure.
Yes.
Part of our formal building permit application.
And that's required by law and because the state statutes also say that the city is not required to monitor private agreements and, and, um, restrictions, which would put a giant burden on staff to try and manage those. And sometimes there's a disagreement as to exactly what they allow.
Does the state law direct individuals to seek out the existence of such? Because if they're, if they're just being asked by us per our policy to. Because if they're, if they're just being asked by us per our policy to state whether or not they're aware of any conflicting agreements, then they can make the best effort, but.
Well, that's what, practically speaking, the way that works is that if there is a certification by an applicant that the plan does not violate private covenants and restrictions and the city is put on notice, it's actual, what the, the second part of the statute, the first one that, that Shannon referenced says that the, the city shall not issue permits if we have actual notice of a private covenant and restriction that prohibits what the permit is requesting. Then practically speaking, what we do at that point is issue a stop word order and say, timeout. Y'all have a disagreement about whether this is allowed under a private agreement. Sort it out, agree, get a court to, to rule, and, and we're, we're not in the business of interpreting these when there's a disagreement about what's allowed and what's not allowed. I, I'll let Shannon weigh in on this, I will say in four and a half years, I can think of maybe two occasions when there was a certification that a project complied with private covenants and restrictions and we were made aware of a, of an agreement, a private agreement after the fact that prohibited specifically what they were asking for. And the trouble sometimes is that the applicant is a contractor, not a property owner, but it doesn't happen very often.
What you shared is very helpful to me, and I'll sidebar with Shannon and the rest, I just, it, it was more trying to understand how, how we might manage that, but this conversation's given me a sense as to how we do, so.
Thanks.
Maybe this is a question for Thomas, and correct me if I can't ask this question, but do we know of, and thi- this is such a progressive and forward-thinking plan, do we know of other cities either in South Carolina or in the southeast that are watching us to determine whether or not they're going to rewrite their own?
Everybody is.
You know, it's interesting, we presented at the South Carolina APA conference and we had a number of inquiries from folks after that. What's going on, exactly what is this, could we have a slide deck, things like that? I don't know of anybody in particular who's following suit, Christine may know.
Contact the municipal association in South Carolina.
But I suspect.
Yeah, but you had really good attendance at that talk.
There was, yeah.
But with all due respect to those other cities, they can pay y'all.
That slide deck is proprietary, other than what we're publishing.
Questions, other questions?
Shannon, that's an extraordinary job. Don't be scarce tonight, though.
Oh, I'm not having to die, what's up?
I can truthfully say we have left the nineteenth century and we're trying to move on.
Thank you very much.
Rejected the session?
Yes, sir. We have two items to discuss this afternoon, both under code section thirty dash four seventy-eight-two to receive legal advice covered by a trade plan program regarding the proposed development code, if there are questions for legal on that. And then also to receive legal advice regarding the structuring of the city's ED apartment. Motion?
So move. On first eye?
Meeting members of the public, let's go downstairs and check back in for the five thirty.
Yeah, no, I think most staff and everybody, please.
Yeah, it's just about this, about speaking.
It's one of the three. It's, once, once we shut the doors too, it's gonna struggle. Hey Brad, will y'all let me see if they've got questions about codes, since we've got that on the agenda and then I'll fire it back. Thank you.
Look at that, we have our seats.
Any, anybody that?
Any que, y'all have any questions for us about the code? We have an exceptional land use attorney, Will Dillard, who's been assisting us. He is with his family, his mother-in-law is like about to pass away, so he's taking care of kids. We can, we can ask him questions and call him if we need to. And he's kind of on standby for us. If something comes up during the meeting, I, I might.
Our attorney, the young.
Yeah. Yeah.
She has, well, she had diagnosed a kidney about a year, a week ago and then went into, I don't know, about three days later.
So, if y'all have questions and feel like executive session, we're in the formal meeting, might be appropriate, feel free. And we can phone a friend, if Logan and I can't field those questions. If you don't have any questions about that, then we can go get Brad and Max to talk about ED apartment structure. I don't know how you can have any questions after, Shannon. Okay.
Oh, good.
There's no question? Good job, Ben.
No questions?
Missiling, yes.
Thank you.
Is this for, is this for John?